So now, item C7.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Rhodes with the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a zoning case located at 1907 Inverness Boulevard. It is, the property is presently developed with a single-family residence. It has a parking area. It was previously occupied by a psychic reader for many years, hence the parking area. It is across the street and adjacent to single-family residences. And to the south, there is a service station and apartments. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property to the Neighborhood Office. Mixed-use development. They would like to occupy the structure with an administrative and business office, and also retain a residential component. This part of Manchuck Road is in the Neighborhood Transition District. It is, this is within the South Austin Combined Neighborhood Plan. The Neighborhood Transition encourages small-scale offices. And the applicant's proposal for an administrative and business office within this district is seen as consistent with, or in accord with, the Neighborhood Plan. And therefore, staff is supporting the applicant's request for NOMUMP, based on its location at the intersection of an arterial roadway. And the applicant's intent to retain a residential component of this property. There are a few issues with this particular case. The applicant, since the February 26 meeting, he has provided a survey of the property showing the impervious cover is 61.2, which is over the allowed amount for neighborhood office. I've also included an aerial from 1986, and it is clear that impervious cover has been added to the back half of this property, and that portion would not be grandfathered. There is also a valid petition of approximately 33% on this property. The applicant is here tonight, and the neighbors are as well. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Applicant? You'll have five minutes. You'll have five minutes. Go ahead and state your name.
Yes, sir. Jonathan Pearlstein, with Austin State Housing and Land Management for 1907 Inverness. We got the property as it is, of course, and we are working currently with Code Enforcement to bring the property up to code. And we, the code officer we're working with, we're kind of waiting till after this to see what, how we're going to proceed on it. The gentleman that's going to be leasing from us is, has a State Farm agency, and that's what he intends to use it for. He will have, you know, a certain number of people there, you know, signs and stuff like that. But, you know, in accordance, it's, you know, there are a lot of, you know, places around there, but he does want to, you know, occupy it, live in it, and keep it, you know, code and all that. But we are working with Code to get all this resolved, so.
Great. Thank you. Questions later. Any other speakers speaking for? Okay. I've got two speakers speaking against. First one is John Thorn Thompson. And I have someone donating time. David Chakos. Are you here? Great. So you'll have eight minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is John Thorn Thompson. I am a professional engineer. I live across the street at 1902 Inverness. And I believe that we should defer to the Code Enforcement Department before we make a decision on this rezoning case. And my rationale hinges on basically two factors. Greg, who is speaking afterwards, has some broader context within the neighborhood itself, but I would like to speak to the property and its suitability for the new zoning, as well as the suitability for the property to have an occupant and/or a business. As it currently sits, we brought a copy of the survey. And as Ms. Rhodes alluded, it demonstrates that there is an excessive impervious cover, about 1 or 2%. But I'd also like to demonstrate that the addition that she mentioned, which is in the top-right corner, encroaches on a setback, the setback to a side lot, which is Mr. and Mrs. Dayton's house at 1905. Should be five feet, and that unpermitted work that was done either two or three years ago sits at 4.2 feet. So in order to square it with the Code Department, presumably, we'd have to have some sort of remediation to remove it from that setback, as it wouldn't be grandfathered in with whatever was there in 1986. Furthermore, professionally, I am a structural engineer, and I believe that the workmanship on the addition and the renovation is substandard. And I believe that the remediation that will need to take place, particularly with respect to the foundation underneath that addition and electrical, plumbing, HVAC, is going to be substantial. And we've got some photos to demonstrate that. That was included in the email that Ms. Dayton sent, I believe, a week and a half ago or so. She included these photos as well. But I'd like to take the opportunity to just look at them again and walk through them a little bit. This speaks to the general workmanship of the roof, which would also be of concern to the Code Enforcement Department. Here are some shingles that have blown off. Again, this is a roof that is probably three years maximum, and these shingles are just sitting in the driveway. I believe they're still there right now. Oh, great. Okay. Okay. And this is the corner that was added to. Look sideways. The original extent is about, in keeping with the line of that fence, probably where this photo was taken, is right at the fence line. So anything beyond the point of view is new construction. Again, here's that corner. If you look at the lines of the siding on the, I think you, on the right, you can see a little bit of a bow towards the fence, which would imply that the foundation under the addition is beginning to settle. You can also see, although it's tough to see in a photo, that the ridge itself is falling over the addition. Here, here's another example of the general craftsmanship. This is a couple of building penetrations, obviously not particularly watertight. And this is an example of the foundation or lack thereof underneath the addition. As you can see, that's a concrete footer that people like to use to put their decks. But this one appears to be holding up siding, if not the structure behind the siding. You can see that there is not a slab-on-grade foundation underneath the addition. And given the settlement that's already occurring, it'd be hard to say that this was an appropriate foundation for this building. It certainly doesn't appear to be performing within any of the city specifications. And then this is at that corner. This is the new construction on the left, the existing on the right. That green you see in the top-right is the foundation, the previous concrete foundation. And then you can see that the soil has eroded from underneath the siding on the left. The siding probably shouldn't be going down to grade like that. There's no ventilation. There doesn't seem to be any consideration for water flow in or out from underneath that addition. And similarly, pests can get in and out. So just to give you a sense of the quality of the work that has been done that wasn't permitted, it's my personal and professional opinion that this is going to be a pretty substantial remediation project. And I think, in light of the amount of remediation, it's appropriate to have some sense of what the plan is before we can evaluate to see whether or not it's appropriate to rezone this property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll call you back if we have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Greg Dayton. And you have someone donating time. Elena Dayton, you're here. You've got six minutes.
Good evening. My name is Greg Dayton. I live next door to the property. I'm the house right next to the side. Just a couple thoughts about things that have been said. It has been said that there was a psychic reader that operated there for many years. I don't know the legality of that psychic reader that operated under the previous owners, but it was cited by the Code Department many times, and it was operating out of an SF3 house for the signage. It was not a legal business, that was my understanding. And the State Farm business that Mr. Pearlstein was talking about could operate within an SF3 property. That is also my understanding, that it, just it's about the number of tenants, the number of customers that come and go, the type of signs you apply. So if it is indeed low traffic, you can have a person living there operate a business within an SF3. But again, that is something that is a possibility. But, you know, giving, given all these code violations that John has cited, or, you know, pointed out for us, it just seems like it's putting the cart before the horse for us to change the zoning on this property. One, because we don't know the full extent of these issues, even with these photos, even with John's professional expertise. And we don't know yet, at least, what the owner is planning to do. And if there's not a full plan, why make the change now? We can always revisit this later on. We found out last week, John did, that the Code Department is waiting on your decision, your collective decision, on what to do, how to, what on asserting themselves in this situation. So whenever this process ends, the building will likely lose its certificate of occupancy. It seems like, based on what we see, that's a possible, that's a distinct possibility. And the owner will have to provide a plan to that. So any further postponements by you collectively only serve the status quo. And it's reasonable to assume that the owner agrees with that assessment, because the Code Department has been, from my understanding, been assessing fines during this postponement of their action. You know, and coming here isn't convenient for myself, for my wife, for our two young children, for my neighbors and their families. We have people here with, Brian just had a baby. He's here tonight. And, but we are convinced it's worth the inconvenience to be here, to try to get something here in our neighborhood, down on Manchuck and Inverness, in that little corridor, that is going to improve the community. And what you see here is a property that stayed like, looking like this for months and months since the new owner took over, and has not been improved. And when we were last here, it was agreed the applicant would provide that survey, that site survey, and a plan to deal with these violations. And that requirement, that requirement for the site survey is the only reason we know that the impervious cover is over that 60% threshold for the NO designation. It is at 61.2% on that site survey. And I understand that the planning department has a certain, they must have a certain review process and a checklist of criteria that would set up how they recommend a, recommend something to you. But I can't understand what the argument is to recommend this at this time. It just, I just don't understand how we can be at the verge of seeing this application approved. Yeah, there are shingles, as John said, over the yard, the grass is overgrown, and we just don't see it being taken care of. It just is not going to improve our neighborhood. I don't believe that Wendy or the planning staff are unreasonable. I appreciate that all of our emails have gone answered, the phone calls have gone answered. I've met with her. She's been very medable to everything we've asked. We've had a dialogue for many months now that have brought to light a lot of information on this. And I think the resulting facts that are all in the backup file, that we've talked about, that we were talking about today, are there because of that conversation. And I appreciate the system is working. And while watching the system work for the last several months, you know, it's my hope that you folks here aren't a rubber stamp on the process, that the staff seems to have had to recommend that even though it is marked for transition, it doesn't have to be transitioned. It's my hope that you will see the sensible thing and deny this application. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for making it here and sharing your testimony. Applicant, you'll have three minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to address the setback issue. We did buy the property as it sits. We didn't, haven't done anything to it as we are waiting on this. As far as the code, I have met Code out there. They didn't see any reason that we should shut it down, not have a, you know, anything dangerous that they saw, not that they're engineers or anything. I did speak to the gentleman, and I thought he said he was in telecom, not engineering, but, and then, you know, we are currently working with the City of Austin Code Enforcement, you know, to ensure that everything, you know, permanent inspections are done, you know, as needed. So, and then, as far as the averaging goes, that whole neighborhood, if you go through it, there's, you'll have three feet to four feet, you know, there's averaging all along there as far as the impervious cover. And it is in direct line with that if we need to get a, and that's another thing, if we need to go get a variance on that, you know, we will.
Great. Thank you. All right, Commissioners. Commissioner Schisler?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kenny. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Commissioners, discussion, questions? For staff? Just questions. Commissioner Shaw.
So just to confirm, the current impervious cover limit is what for the zoning that it currently has?
I understand it's SF3, 45%.
Yeah, okay. I was just, I-
It is 45% for SF3. However, impervious cover prior to 1986 was considered grandfathered. And my assumption is that it was more than 45% in 1986. It's now 61. So there's, there's some difference. What that number was in 1986, I don't know. The applicant, if he is successful with this zoning case, would have to work that out with the Development Services Department.
And second question, were, were the additions, did those have any city inspections, electric, building inspection as part of the additional?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So we don't know whether it meets code or not?
I, according to the Code Violation Department, the Code Violation report that's in the backup, they do need to secure permits for the windows, dormers, and I can't remember what the third thing was, but-
Okay. But we really don't know if the electrical, if there's other safety hazards that can be part of the, what was built? I mean, there was no, no inspection process for this?
There weren't permits for those, permits for those, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner McGraw?
Did I see somewhere that under home occupation, you can have a sign?
I think you can, but it's on specific corridors, and this isn't one of those corridors.
It isn't? Okay, but you could have a home occupation with one employee, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kenny?
Question for the applicant. Are you hired to represent the owner, or are you-
I'm actually, no, he's a partner with me in other properties.
Okay. And, and you are the, then, you and your partners are the original applicants?
Pardon?
This hasn't changed hands really recently. You guys are the original applicants?
Yes, yes. He purchased this before August, and, and, yes.
Am I recalling correctly that this is the third meeting that we've had on this case now, and on the prior two, we didn't have anybody show up from your side?
No, we've showed up, but we've let her know we've had to postpone.
You definitely weren't here the last one.
Right, we postponed, which, we had called Wendy to postpone it.
Okay, you requested a postponement.
Pardon?
You had requested a postponement.
Yes, we did. I couldn't attend the meeting, yes.
Okay. And then that was the case for the prior meeting as well?
Uh, no, another, someone else had postponed, I don't know. It was a-
So this, this is the fourth time this has been here. The first time was in January, and it was postponed at the request of a neighborhood resident. The second meeting was canceled due to lack of a quorum, so that was in February. We re-noticed for the 26th of February, and at that point, the applicant was not present and called me, or I called him, and he requested a postponement at that time. And that brings us to today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schneider?
I have a question for the neighborhood. Maybe Mr. Dayton? So, so this, I know you guys have been here for many months, and there was some encouragement, as I recall, by staff and by the planning commission to have some conversations with the applicant.
Yes.
So can you talk about those and what sorts of progress you've made?
Yeah, when we were here for the first meeting, in early, mid-January, it was suggested by staff, by, by the professionals, that we reach out to the, to the applicant. Or perhaps it was the second meeting. Following, it was the first meeting, but I did, I ultimately reached out by email to Mr. Pearlstein. I did not receive, you know, an email from him. I reached out to him. I did ultimately set up a phone call with him. I called him. We spoke several times at various points, three times. The thing about speaking with the applicant, we have not met the owner. I've been told that there's an owner, there's also a co-owner. It was a little confusing about who he was answering to, you know, who was involved with whom. And then, I couldn't, I didn't understand who, sort of what the priorities were for them. At one point, it seemed like they wanted to know what we wanted. At another point, he was telling me, oh, well, we'll just throw up our hands. We have a co-owner that's unhappy. We'll just move some people in, and they'll just be terrible neighbors, and there'll be cars on blocks. And I said, okay, well, we have neighbors like that anyway, you know, across the street or whatever. It doesn't matter. You know, we just want the neighborhood to improve if we're going to make this change. And after that, I believe the applicant spoke to Ms. Rhodes. They submitted for the NO change, so that should help us with our timeline on that. So those were the conversations we had. I hadn't spoken with the applicant or the owner until today, when he called me about 20 minutes before the hearing tonight. So that's the chain of events. Does that answer your question?
Thanks. So one, so one more. I've, I live not too far, so am I remembering correctly that there's a shopping center more or less directly across Manchuck from?
Yes.
And, and as I recall, there were a lot of vacancies in it?
There are vacancies in the Crockett Square, which is directly across the street from Manchuck. In mid-February, I sent all of the, at the time, the members of the council, as well as Ms. Rhodes, and I believe that was it, the photos of various properties that were either vacant or for lease in the neighborhood, within basically a quarter mile. I drove, because it was just faster, but within walking distance of my house, of 1907. And there was a number, I forget the count, but if you look back through the backup file or perhaps your own email, you will see photos of these properties and the listing of who owns them from the Travis County records. There's a lot of them. So there are some available, especially right across the street. And it is a popular place, but there are still empty office spaces available nearby. Thanks. Anybody else? Thank you.
Yeah, I have one more question. Yeah, and, I mean, a lot, the present, I appreciate the presentations on the building and, and its questionable history, but the zoning process is to change what's allowed on the property, and it doesn't, I mean, anything else that happens as far as whether they tear down this building, they would need a permit for that. If they build a new building, they need a permit for that.
They would.
If they want to occupy this building and change the use, they would need a permit for that. So the zoning itself doesn't give them any, any, any way to change the building without another permit. So I was trying to find out what, if the Neighborhood Plan said that this could be used in this way, what specifically the, the neighborhood is against about changing the zoning to allow?
We, well, we don't feel that at this time, gate, based on the vacancies of the available lease spaces, and the way the neighborhood is changing positively, the direction we're moving already with young, young families moving in, the existing families that are there, the availability of business space already. There is still, there is available housing. There is housing coming in, there's housing already there, that there's a need to make this change right now to unlock that door. I think I used that analogy before, to unlock this particular door now. And if you're going to do it, you want to make sure it's the right time, that you unlock it with the right, at the right time, where it's really going to improve the community, that you do it so that it is a good, a good space, and it starts a good foundation to move the, to move forward. And I just don't think this is the time for that.
Commissioner McGraw?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to deny, and I'm happy to discuss that.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I would. This is, I went down there a few weeks ago, and we had this on our agenda. And this is a nice neighborhood. It's a neighborhood of modest homes, and people are raising their families there. I know they didn't expect to have, you know, properties flipped from residential to commercial. And I, I really have problems with rewarding someone who's used their property illegally and built illegally with a zoning change. I don't think that's right. Everything we hear is there's a housing shortage, housing shortage. Why would we take a house zoned for a house and flip it to commercial? I don't know why on earth we would do that. And as far as the busy street, the city likes to say, oh, busy streets should flip. There are houses being built on busy streets all over this city, and people live in them. There are new houses being built on 45th Street at Mopac. So there's no reason, this can't be a viable home. It's just that somebody's gotten away with using it commercially, you know, without any enforcement. As far as, and the new zoning could allow this to be demolished and a whole commercial building to be built. And I think that would be inappropriate. This house faces the other houses, and I think with all respect for these homeowners, that we should deny this zoning. They do have a valid petition also. Council will have to deal with that.
Thank you, Commissioner McGraw. Commissioner Schneider, I'll take you after. We take in someone against. Any Commissioners against? Commissioner Kenny?
I'm going to reluctantly vote against this one. First, I'm going to say why I'm going to vote against it. This body and council just passed a street mobility plan that called to encourage employment along our transit corridors. Manchuck is the site of a future BRT corridor. The, while we do have a housing crisis, I don't think that the solution is to bar the construction of new employment opportunities, especially along our transit corridors. So our amended comprehensive plan calls for employment in commercial on this street. So that is why I think it should be approved. I reluctantly support it because there is a lot of change that needs to happen in this city in order for us to meet our climate and our transit and our housing and our affordability goals. A lot of that change is going to be very uncomfortable for people who are there and are used to a certain environment, and it is incumbent upon the people who want to make change to make sure that they are fulfilling all their responsibilities. And I think it is just really unacceptable to no-show for a meeting when the neighbors come down here and they don't have a financial interest, they're not being paid, they drag themselves all the way down here, they go through our long meetings, the applicant has to show up. If this were somebody who was represented by an agent, I would urge us to vote against this, because that's their professional job, and they need to fulfill that. I know that you're not an agent, and so, you know, I'm personally going to let this one slide, but I just want to put everybody on notice that if we're going to have neighbors coming down here, their time needs to be respected. And it's just, it's absolutely unacceptable to no-show. But that being said, I will be voting against this motion.
Commissioner Schneider?
Under, I think, under normal circumstances, I would be in favor of the change to neighborhood office. It's part of the Neighborhood Plan, but I think we should not forget that fundamentally, what the Neighborhood Plan is about is about improving the neighborhood. And we've got not everybody, but a great deal of the neighbors who think that this is a bad idea. I think there's not an urgent need for this kind of office space there. There's vacancies within a stone's throw. So that's my substantive argument about why I support this motion. I think, just thinking about process, our role, I see our role as a little different from staff's. Staff's looks at, it's- Staff's looks at, it's, it's a quantitative analysis, and ours is more qualitative. And I think we've seen the neighbors show up many times and talked about their attempts to get together and have a discussion with the applicant. And we're, part of what our role is, I think, is to encourage those conversations, because I think there really is a way for there to be a meeting of the minds here. I think the neighbors are not, they're, they've, my sense is they feel so burned about this process that they are in opposition to this, but they're not necessarily in opposition to that, to the change once the problems are addressed and once the applicant acts in better faith. So that's why I support this motion.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Schisler, speaking against?
Well, the neighborhood plan calls out for this to be developed as a commercial property, and, and so I think if, I'm not sure what the owner's, the buyer's plans are. I mean, theoretically, he could open his own business in this. I did have one question for staff. Do they, do they have to comply with compatibility on this, on this, of course? Or is the neighborhood plan wave compatibility?
Uh, no, the neighborhood doesn't, the neighborhood plan doesn't wave compatibility.
Okay. Well, it's a small lot to, to try and make commercial work on, but I think the neighborhood's plan calls for it to be developed as a neighborhood commercial use. I think it sounded to me like a lot of, there was a lot of animosity with the prior, the prior owner of the property that didn't do things through the city permit processes, but that's, that's happened everywhere in the city, and I don't think that is a different process than the zoning process, the permitting and, and code enforcement is, is a different issue that should not be a part of the, of the zoning discussion, but it is. So with that, I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve this case.
Okay, we have a substitute motion, which is essentially the opposite motion. Okay. Yeah, is there anyone? Any Commissioners want a second? Okay, there's no second. All right, so-
Future educator, I'm-
Third Commissioner speaking in favor of the motion. Commissioner Shaw.
So this is the motion to deny?
Motion to deny by Commissioner McGraw.
I just feel like, for me, if we're going to, especially if it's residential, could be, if we're putting a commercial, to me, there's a code issue, perhaps safety issues. I really want the code people to go in, figure out whether this building is safe, and it checks all the boxes for meeting our requirements before we start, you know, increasing the number of people and folks that might be going into this unit. So I really think we should put that first, bring it back. If it checks out, we'll give them what they want. But I think we first need to make sure it's a safe structure. That's it.
Thank you. Third Commissioner speaking against the motion. Commissioner Anderson.
I, I hear you. I hear. Commissioner Shaw, I don't think that anyone's going to put forward an investment into a property where they're not sure of the outcome. I mean, that's half the reason, it's really a hard in Austin to do things without predictability. You want predictability. And so, I mean, I, I think after the code rewrite, when we map it, if the map is worth its weight in salt, that this is going to be zoned to this or greater anyway, and so I'll be against this.
All right, so we've got three, four, and three against. They've already spoken. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. One, two, three, four, five. All those against? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so that motion fails. Any other ideas?
Chair.
Commissioner Kenny?
Move passage.
Okay, is there, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Schisler. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of to, to approve the zoning, please say aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, that motion passes. Actually, against? Sorry, I didn't take against. One, two, three, four, five. All right, so that motion passes. Did I count that right?
Mm-hmm.
Did we gain a Commissioner? I was at 11. How did I get 7.5? All those four, one more time. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those against? One, two, three, four, okay. Seven, four. All right, that motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So to confirm, the NOM U N P, as requested by the applicant, was approved?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear with the members in the audience, and then also to say that this case is, it's on this Thursday, April 25th agenda at council. However, I am requesting a postponement to the 9th of May so that I can update the backup from tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Steph, could I, could I request that you stay in touch with any of the folks, and you take their contact information tonight and make sure that they're fully updated, and especially on any postponements that might happen?
Yes, I have been in touch with them on a regular basis.
Good, great, thank you.
Mr. Dayton, very briefly, one minute.
Yes, when we petitioned, and we got 33%, it was my understanding it had to be a supermajority of-
At council.
At, at council.
Yeah.
So not at this commission.
Not at this commission, yeah. Thank you, sir. Okay.